Meeting come to order, call or roll.
Mr. Vanilla.
Here.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Patton?
Here.
Mr. Goss?
Here.
Mayor Butler?
Here. Uh, minutes of the meeting of April the thirteenth, are there any additions or corrections? If not, they will be approved. Uh, we had a special meeting, didn't we?
Yes.
On, uh, April the sixteenth. Any addition or correction there? If not, they will be approved. We had a meeting on April twenty-one. Minutes are there, is there any additions or corrections? If not, they will be approved. First item is to consider the budget for the next fiscal year, which we just had a public hearing for. This will be ordinance number thirty-two fifty-two. Uh, what is your pleasure?
I'm going to wait up. I make a motion to adopt the budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
As reflected in ordinance thirty-two fifty-two.
Yeah, I second that.
Call or roll.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yay.
Mr. Ricks?
Yay.
Commissioner Patton?
Yay.
Mayor, uh, Commissioner Goss?
Yay.
Mayor Butler?
Yay. Okay, now, we have the, uh, the resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen, uh, for approval of the supplemental budget for the fiscal year two fourteen, uh, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. You want to explain that to us, Steve?
Sure. What we do every year, we, uh, for items which we have spent, which we need to pass, uh, pass a revision in order to be able to, uh, cover those expenses. These are all expenses that have been previously approved by council, uh, on an individual basis. And then we basically just do a summary of it, uh, of, of, of the various approvals. You know, because all the expenditures are approved, whether, you know, whether they're in the budget or not. And, you know, and we've spent some, you know, due to having some excess funds. For instance, we got in public, in, uh, in, in, for instance, as one example, we, we, uh, we did not have it in the budget, the, uh, the road there by height, because we didn't know we was going to be building the road there for, you know, for the Volkswagen. You know, and we took out a loan then for that. So that was four hundred thousand right there, additional expenditures which we had to make, which when we passed the budget originally, we had no idea we were going to be making that expenditure.
Yeah. Okay, was there any other major item that, uh, we have in the supplemental?
That, that was the largest one that I can think, I can, I can come to my, that comes to mind. The other is just various operating expenses associated, maybe associated with, you know, uh, operating, uh, et cetera. And, and, you know, and we've had, and then the, and the other thing to keep in mind that we, we did have the funds available to make those expenditures.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, in fact, that, the, the, the four hundred thousand, that was only one that we borrowed money on in order to, you know, in order to do that.
Yeah, and that was a capital.
And that was a capital improvement. All the others were, were, are, were, are operating. There could have been some capital items in there, but, but we all paid them with existing funds.
Okay, any, uh, question, comment received? If not, what's your pleasure?
I'm going to adopt resolution twenty fifteen dash thirteen.
Second.
Call or roll. Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yay.
Mr. Ricks?
Yay.
Mr. Patton?
Yay.
Mr. Goss?
Yay.
Mayor Butler?
Uh, yay. Uh, now, we come to the time for the seating of the new council. Uh, we have received the, uh, certificate of results of the election April the seventh from, uh, Amanda Barnes, the, uh, county clerk. It, uh, shows that, um, Robert, uh, Butler, uh, was elected mayor. Uh, Jim Webb, Anthony Vanilla, Angelo Hightower, and John Goss were elected commissioners. Before we, uh, go out and have the certificate of election presented, uh, I wonder, Doug, did you have anything you wanted to say?
First of all, let me thank, um, the citizens for the last four years for putting me here. I've enjoyed it immensely. Um, thank you for the opportunity, I hope I've done a, a good job. Uh, I also would like to thank the council. Um, I think we, in general, were headed the same direction. Uh, they took us, may, we may believe that we, we, we should take a different path to get to the same spot, but that, that's what a council is for. I'd like to thank all of you for, uh, your kindness and your, your welcoming me and, and helping me get on board, I appreciate it. Um, I wish the new council the best. Um, tough road to haul, but, uh, we can do this. I thank you very much.
Okay, Jay, did you have something you'd like to say?
I didn't, uh, it's been a great eight years. It was a great big filler for me after losing my wife. And I think we got along beautiful.
Yeah, your only problem was you kept, uh, having a tire going down while we were trying to get business.
I thought it was my turn to talk. He does it all the time. Anyway, actually, I've had nine and a half, about roughly nine and a half years. Uh, the mayor told me, I'm, I'm the only fire police commissioner that made it through four. So I'll double the record?
Oh, yeah.
If that's true, and, uh, I, it's time to go, apparently. But I do appreciate you guys, and I guess mainly for putting up with me. I think we got the two departments that I had, uh, I feel like they're the greatest. And I feel they'll stay that way. And thank you for showing. I wish we had sold tickets, we'd picked up a few dollars for the treasury. You probably wouldn't have showed, yeah. Thanks again, everyone.
Yeah, uh, uh, on, on behalf of the council, I want to, uh, thank both of you gentlemen, and commend you for the work that you've done on the council. I know the city is better off because of the service that you two have rendered to the city and its citizens. Of course, we, uh, wish you the best, and if there is anything that, uh, we can do, uh, in the future that will help make the life easier for you, uh, let us know. And I might suggest this, uh, don't forget us. Come to council meeting, not all the time, but from time to time.
You don't want us all the time?
No, no, because you'd always have something to say, which we may or may not want to hear.
You scared me there for a minute when you said, maybe, uh, we're better off, uh, when you had that, did you catch that? Scared me for a minute, but...
So, uh, that having been said, I think the time has come now for the, uh, clerk to present the certificate of election. Uh, so, uh, Jim, Angelo, if you'll come up to the front here. And you two guys. Jay, where are you? Angelo?
Okay, well, these are your certificate of election. These come from the county clerk, Amanda Barnes, uh, Williams County Clerk and Recorder. And it's, uh, to certify that a consolidated election held on April the seventh, two thousand fifteen. Robert L. Butler was duly elected to be officer mayor of the city of Marion. And Amanda has sent her hand here. So congratulations, Mayor Butler, another four years. And, um, this is, these are in no particular order, this is the way of broadened down book. Uh, and this is to Jim Webb, it reads the same from Amanda Barnes, Williams County Clerk and Recorder, uh, that she's certified that a consolidated election held on April the seventh, two thousand fifteen. Jim Webb was elected to the office of Commissioner of City of Marion. Congratulations. Anthony, same to you. Amanda Barnes, Williams County Clerk and Recorder, that's certified that at the elections, you were elected to Commissioner of City of Marion. Congratulations. And I'll give to you. You, John, John Goss. Amanda Barnes has certified that a consolidated election on April the seventh, two thousand fifteen. John L. Goss was duly elected to the office of Commissioner of the City of Marion. And she signed it, stamped it here. There you go. Angelo. Amanda Barnes, uh, as the Williamson County Recorder, uh, of Williamson County, the state of Illinois, that's hereby certified that a consolidated election held on April the seventh, two thousand fifteen. Angelo Hightower was duly elected to the office of Commissioner of the City of Marion, in the county of Williamson, the state of Illinois.
Now, I would like to say that, uh, everyone here has, uh, healed the bond as required and made the deal. So this is the new city council, I think they deserve an applause. Having been said, let's get to work. Alice, uh, suggested that I let everybody know that I still have the certificate of election from nineteen sixty-three, when I was first elected mayor. Uh, for some time, I've had that hanging in the office along with the certificate of election of the last prior election, because I thought that was going to be the beginning and the end. But I was mistaken.
Again?
He says again, first mistake I remember making. So having said that, uh... Let's see. All right, let's look at five, I think that's simply the official result, tabulated. Okay, this would be ordinance number thirty-two fifty-four.
Thirty-three.
What did I say?
Four.
Four.
Right, I'm number five, oh.
Oh, oh, I'm working here, all right. I'm looking at the wrong number. Okay. Well, I haven't, no, I don't have that. Okay, ordinance number thirty-two fifty-three. Uh, be ordained by the city council official election results of regular municipal election held April seventh, have been received with county clerk. And they report what we already know, Butler elected mayor, and Vanilla, Goss, Webb, Hightower elected commissioners. Pursuant to state statute, all such elected officials having complied with statutory requirements take office and assume their respective duties this twenty-seventh day of April, two thousand fifteen. What's your pleasure, with respect to ordinance thirty-two fifty-three?
So moved.
Second.
All or?
Commissioner Goss?
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Webb?
Yeah.
Commissioner Vanilla?
Yay.
And Commissioner Hightower?
Yeah.
Okay, now, thirty-two fifty-four. Uh, be ordained by the city council. Mayor and commissioners are assigned supervision of and authority over the departments of the city government as indicated. Uh, Mayor Butler, Public Affairs. Commissioner Vanilla, Accounts and Finance. Commissioner Jim Webb, Public Health and Safety. Commissioner John Goss, Streets and Public Improvements. Commissioner Angelo Hightower, Public Property. What is your pleasure?
I'm going to approve ordinance number thirty-two fifty-four.
Second.
Call or roll.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yay.
Mr. Hightower?
Yay.
Mr. Webb?
Yay.
Mr. Goss?
Yay.
Mayor Butler?
Yay. Okay, ordinance number thirty-two fifty-five, uh, sets out the, uh, responsibility, and I suppose you would say jurisdiction of the various, uh, departments. And it's all spelled out there. That this is, uh, pretty much copied from what it was four years ago. It's pretty well self-explanatory. Uh, if you have any question or comment? If not, what's your pleasure? Make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-two fifty-five.
I'll second it.
Call or roll.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yay.
Mr. Hightower?
Yay.
Mr. Webb?
Yeah.
Mr. Goss?
Yay.
Mayor Butler?
Uh, yay. Okay, now, we have certain, um, city officials that need to be, uh, reappointed. Uh, this is ordinance number thirty-two fifty-six. Following named persons are hereby appointed to positions of office as specified for the term of two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. Now, this is four years. Uh, Gail West, City Administrator. Steve Green, City Attorney. Alice Rick, City Clerk. Steve Hale, City Treasurer. Brian Fisher, Safety Director. Don Tonini, Chief of Police. Jerry Odom, Chief of the Fire Department. Terrence Henry, Information Technology Director. Uh, what's your pleasure, with respect to ordinance thirty-two fifty-six?
I'm going to adopt ordinance number thirty-two fifty-six.
Second.
Call or roll.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yay.
Mr. Hightower?
Yay.
Mr. Webb?
Yay.
Goss?
Yay.
Mayor Butler?
Yay. Okay, now, we're talking about approved replacement, uh, fire department clerk due to vacancy. Now, you wouldn't know anything about this, I'm sure, because, uh, oh, here comes the high key, he'll tell us.
Um, looking for, uh, council approval to refill vacancy for a clerk's position. Uh, his last day, I believe, was last Friday. Uh, he was a full-time dispatcher with the Williamson County and working part-time with us. And it was just a, uh, conflict between the two jobs, it was turning out to be too much. So, uh, his last day was last Friday, so we're seeking council approval to fill this vacancy. It's a, uh, it's a part-time job.
Move the mic over in front of her, now speaking to the mic.
It's a part-time job, less than twenty hours a week, um, so...
Okay, and, um...
What's the rate of pay?
It's probably going to be ten dollars an hour.
Okay, so, we're not creating a new position, it's simply filling one already in existence?
Yes, yes.
Okay, would you want to move acceptance to that?
Yeah, I'd like that motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
Call or roll.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yay.
Mr. Hightower?
Yeah, yay.
Mr. Webb?
Yay.
Mayor Butler?
Yeah.
Mr. Goss?
Yeah.
Okay, who can tell us about the, uh, police department?
Um, the chief is out of town currently.
You want to come up?
Uh, the chief is out of town at a conference. Um, she was desiring to hire one part-time, uh, dispatcher. There are currently, uh, two vacancies for part-time dispatchers. And she was seeking council approval, uh, to hire that position. And I believe the rate of pay is in your agenda.
Okay, so this is not creating a new position?
No, these are just, uh, these are just currently, uh, there are two vacancies for dispatchers.
Okay. Having said that...
Yeah, we do have a name for this, it looks like, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Philip Boner?
Yeah, that, that early rate's not, not online.
Oh, it's not?
No. No, I'm not either. Yeah, it's okay.
It's, uh, probation one.
Use a group of probation one of, uh, even though they're non-union, we usually use probation one for the, for their pay.
It'd be the same pay grade as before, right?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so, okay.
Yeah, it's probation one, I don't remember the exact amount, but it's no different than one. Uh, it was, it were, it, it's the same pay that these prior ones had before they left.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to, uh, hire Philip Boner for part-time dispatcher, mayor of police.
I second that motion.
Call or roll.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yay.
Mr. Hightower?
Yay.
Mr. Webb?
Yay.
Mr. Goss?
Yay.
Mayor Butler?
Yay. Okay, discuss renovation of water office, what's this all about?
Well, we need some improvements to our office, better access. Since we've, uh, beautified the rest of city hall, we didn't want to fall short and, uh, leave ourselves out, so... I think I see her in the crowd, there she is. Cindy, come on up and explain this renovation.
Do you have a copy of the estimate? Basically, the estimate, what we're asking to do is to move, pardon me? What we would like to do, or asking the, the council for approval, is to basically upgrade or make the office more customer-friendly. As you come in the door, it, it's a little bit deterring for the customers. So to bring this door at the center and just open it up, along with putting some acrylic at the top to, to try to deter some germs, as we know, trying to be a little safety-conscious.
Now, you're talking about cutting a hole in the wall.
Right here. We're going to center the door in the entrance, yes.
You really think that's necessary?
Well, when people actually get bottlenecked, whenever they go down the hall and they look and they can't really see what's going on, I think it kind of holds people up a little bit.
Okay. What do you say, Commissioner?
You need to, I, I know our estimate showed, uh, fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty, but some of that's being paid by, uh, insurance, so the actual amount for us will be eight thousand four hundred and ninety.
Correct.
That's right.
That's not for you.
Yeah, so, the fourteen, three, three hundred and thirty is, is, uh, actually not correct, because that's, uh, it's actually going to be eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
That makes me feel a whole lot more comfortable.
Does the door sound better at eight thousand four hundred?
Yeah, the door doesn't sound...
Okay, okay.
Will that be coming out of the new budget, Anthony, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It is provided in the new budget too.
Right.
Is it okay?
Right. It's in the new budget, so...
You have the money? You have the money? The water department, is that, is that going to be gas tax?
We're flush with money.
Okay.
But if you're, if you're, if you're giving it, I'll take it. No, it's my motion to accept the, uh, the, uh...
Proposed renovation of the...
Proposed renovation for eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars for people signing construction.
Okay, I got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
Back in for call or roll.
Commissioner Vanilla?
Yay.
Commissioner Hightower?
Yay.
Commissioner Webb?
Yay.
Mr. Goss?
Yay.
Mayor Butler?
Uh, yay, okay. Who can tell us about the part-time of employees? Oh, there's Steve.
How we doing this evening? We are seeking council approval to approve five part-time staff, under twenty hours a week. Uh, you should have those in front of you there, but, uh, we have some front desk staff, some aquatics instructors as well. Um, those would be at different pay rates, depending on which one you're, you're looking at there. But these were all a vacancies that we have filled. Uh, the two aquatics instructors are new instructors that are budgeted for the fifteen, sixteen fiscal year.
What rate of pay on those?
The aquatics instructors are at twenty an hour, or per class technically.
How often do they teach?
We're looking to add two classes a week in the evening time. We currently only have a few offerings in the evening, so we're adding some more evening times.
How long do, do the classes last?
They're just an hour.
Steve, you, you said five?
Yeah, there's five total.
I, I would have four.
You shouldn't have another sheet in there.
You haven't got the sheet out there somewhere?
Well... Let's see, I've got Alicia Eggers, Lisa Ford, Carla Glusnik, Leonard. And then you have Ryan Gutshock?
Uh huh.
And Kenesha Holliday?
Yes, sir. Two aquatics instructors, two membership staff, and then one lifeguard, too.
Okay, any other comment or question?
Are these replacements or addition to?
The aquatics instructors would be in addition to, but they are budgeted for the fifteen, sixteen fiscal year. The others are replacement.
That would be, uh, Lisa Ford and Carla?
Yes, sir. Got a lot of people that want to get in that pool and take some, take some aquatics classes. We had a waiting list of, uh, twenty-seven for one class.
Uh, are, are these, uh, teaching people to swim or what?
No, these are group exercise classes, so aqua dance, aqua cardio, aquazumba.
Aqua dance?
Oh, yeah, aqua dance, we're ready for you, mayor, come on over. Uh, I, I will reserve that for the next council meeting. I prefer to be in my swimsuit if I'm going to do it, I want to make sure you get a full visual.
Is that where you, you are upside down, you stick your head in the water, and your feet are up in the air?
It, it's actually technically, uh, that would be underwater basket weaving.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, having said that, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve these, uh, employees for the hook.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Call or roll.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yay.
Mr. Hightower?
Yay.
Mr. Webb?
Yay.
Mr. Goss?
Yay.
Mayor Butler?
Yay.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, who can tell us about the citywide mosquito abatement?
Actually, this is from Superintendent Brett Kane. This is a continuation of our mosquito abatement program. And he has a pretty, uh, a letter to the council based upon usage last year, two hundred and seventy gallons of insecticide. Uh, he's actually had bids, uh, accepted, and he would recommend the low bid from LD Supply. And I believe the other bids are attached for the council's, uh, review.
Gail, do we spray this with our own employees, do you know?
Yes.
Okay.
We use, uh, employees that have been trained and certified for the, and program...
Yeah.
Uh, in our sewer department.
That was my next question, so I knew you had to be certified.
Yeah, certified.
Yes, you'll see a most, mostly, you know, early, uh, dusk... You'll see them most, mostly, you know, early at dusk, and you hear the truck out humming as you go around town.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Having said that, what's your motion?
I'm gonna approve item thirteen.
Is, is this what we use? We use two hundred and seventy gallons last year? Is that, is that a concentrate that's broken down? Do you know that?
No, I don't know.
I'm sure it probably is. That's usually, they'll cut it with water.
Yeah.
Okay, what's your motion?
I'm gonna approve item thirteen, take the low bid from the LD, uh, Supply.
Commissioner Vanilla.
Yay.
Commissioner Hightower.
Yay.
Mr. Webb.
Yay.
Mr. Goss.
Yay.
Mayor Butler.
Hey. Okay, where, uh, you wanna talk to us, uh, Brian? Purchase the thirteen radios plus program software and cables. Oh, okay. You guys split the labor between the...
The, uh... I was looking for a council approval to purchase thirteen radios using, uh, Brian's, uh, Illinois Public Risk Fund grant that was budgeted for, uh, some communication for the fire department. Um, we're looking at thirteen portable radios. The costs are twenty-two thousand seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Then also buying the program software for the radios to be able to program them ourself, along with the cables of three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And that way, we don't have to send the radios off to have them programmed. We can do it all ourself. We need to change the programming. Uh, the ITex people can go in and do it for us, so we have no cost there in programming the radios.
That's good. And you've got the money to pay for this, Brian?
We received a check about three, uh, three weeks ago.
Okay. All right, what's your question?
I'd like a motion to approve the buy, purchase of thirteen, uh, handheld, uh, radios for twenty-two thousand seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
All right, call roll.
Commissioner Vanilla.
Yay.
Commissioner Hightower.
Yay.
Mr. Webb.
Yay.
Mr. Goss.
Yay.
Mayor Butler.
Yay. Okay, item fifteen. Request for special use permit. Where's Jim? Oh. Special use permit. Duplex, Dwayne Castellano. Oh, okay. Well, you guys can have a joint, uh, statement here. Come up, Dane, tell us what you're wanting to do.
I'm just wanting to put a duplex on, uh, Chestnut Street in Marion. I have the, uh, layout right here, if you guys have to see it.
Okay, now, this is in, uh, C-one commercial zone?
It's actually a vacant block right now.
Correct.
Have no objection to it? Sounds like a good move to me. Okay, what's your pleasure?
I'd like a motion to accept it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Request for special use permit. Yeah, you gotta hit up, all right, call roll. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vanilla.
Yay.
Commissioner Hightower.
Yay.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Goss.
Yay.
Now, I believe we have a delegation here of, uh, young Boy Scouts. One or two almost on the sweep, uh, waiting, but...
At least two, McKin, McKinney, two.
Okay.
Okay.
I have two boys here that are working in our citizen community merit badge, and one of the requirements is to be at a city council meeting. And they're supposed to pay attention, 'cause they're gonna tell me about one issue these guys talked about when we leave here, or they'll do another city council meeting.
Oh.
All right? And, uh, I guess you wanna introduce them?
Yeah, speak, speak into the microphone. Pull the mic, pull the mic down. Pull the microphone down, speak into that thing.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Jim Smith.
Um, how old are you?
Uh, ten years old.
What rank?
Uh, scout.
How long you been in scouts?
Like a month, a month?
You've been a scout for a month?
Been a month. You crossed over from the Cub Scouts.
Oh, okay. How, how old are you?
Uh, ten years old.
Seven?
Ten.
Ten? What happened? I couldn't join scouts until I was twelve. My goodness gracious. O- okay. Now, what rank do you have now?
Uh, scout.
Uh, you're a tenderfoot.
He's working on tenderfoot right now.
Oh, okay. Right now, you're a scout. And then you get tenderfoot. Well, okay, now, son?
I'm Wesley Smith. I am ten years old. I am scout. I've been in a scout for a month and... I have zero merit badges.
Okay, so you're also a scout, but you're working on being a tenderfoot, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, here's the ace. Look at all the merit badges. How many merit badges do you have, son?
Thirty.
Thirty? Boy, okay, what's your name?
Ryan Korsnawski.
And how old are you?
Fourteen.
How long have you been a Boy Scout?
Since you were eleven.
Since I was eleven.
Since you were eleven, okay. Uh, what rank do you have?
Star.
You're star? You're working on life?
Yes.
Well, you've got enough merit badges to have the life rank, haven't you?
Yes.
So, that oughta be coming along.
It is. I think it is.
It's too short of having all the required merit badges for Eagle.
Yeah.
So, it's a little ahead on that part.
Yeah. Oh, that's great. I got it. Uh, now, you've been, uh, watching and listening to the city council meeting? Do you have any questions?
No.
Uh, do, do you wanna tell us something?
No.
Are you nervous?
Yeah.
You're amongst friends.
And he's been here before. This is not his first trip to the, to the podium. He's been here before.
Yes.
Forgot to ask, uh, what troop, what troop are you with?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. And, and what organization sponsors your troop?
Aldersgate.
Aldersgate what?
Church.
Aldersgate Methodist Church is your sponsor?
Yes.
Good. You don't have any, uh, question you wanna ask us?
No.
Okay. Have, have you learned anything tonight?
Okay, turn around. I want you to go first.
Are you two kind to each other, Dave?
Okay, now, we need to have you introduced.
My name's, uh, Ken Korsnawski. I'm Ryan's father, and I'm, uh, on the committee for Troop Forty-two, and I'm a merit badge counselor for citizen community and camping. So, I, I'll be here quite often. We just crossed over, uh, ten new boys last weekend.
Oh, great, great.
From the Cub Scouts, so...
How long have you been involved in scouting?
I've been involved since he was five. He went through the Cub Scouts, so that would've been two thousand six on.
Were you a Boy Scout when you were growing up?
No, sir.
Oh, boy, you were deprived.
Yes, I was, uh...
But you're making up for it now.
Yep. I retired from the military and said I'd never camp again, and that's all I do now. I was in the Navy Seabees. And, uh, we're going camping this weekend, uh, Crab Orchard Lake for the Buddy Bass Tournament.
Oh, great. Seabees, you built things, you didn't tear them down.
No, we built them.
That's great. Well, we're certainly, uh, happy you're all here, and we're proud of you, and I would like to congratulate you all.
Thank you. On a different note, uh, I made a phone call this week to the office here about two issues I had, and within six hours, to my surprise, they were working on them.
Are you sure you called the, uh, City Hall?
And I think, yeah, I'm sure I did, but I was, I'm thinking, I was just lucky with a coincidence, 'cause one of them's claiming to ditch out behind Roberta. And then, and then, uh, like an hour later, they showed up and started doing it.
That's great.
Was that the street department did that?
Yeah.
Thought I'd mention it.
But my wife's like, "You need to call City Hall, uh, more often, you get everything done," she said.
Tell her, not this year. Okay, well, thank you so much, we appreciate it. All right. Anybody else have something we need to take up?
I do.
Okay, make it brief.
So, under those lights? Well, first of all, I'm not here to complain about any kind of appliance store tonight, unless I'm pushed into it. So, that's not why I'm here. I passed out some information a while ago to everybody that's in this place. My name's Jim Johnson. I live in Marion. I've lived in Marion most of my life. I was, uh, born in nineteen fifty-four, went to Marion High School, went to the United States Navy, got out, became a registered nurse, worked at Community Hospital in Marion, worked at VA Hospital, and worked Department of Corrections, Maximum Security at Menard Correctional Center in Chester, Illinois. And the last seven years, I've been taking care of my elderly mother, who's eighty-four, and, uh, we've been taking care of each other, more or less. I've been keeping her home and properties up and planting plants and taking her to the doctor and taking her to the pharmacy, and things of that sort. But I, what I mainly wanna talk about is, uh, myself and what's happened to me, uh, when I was, uh, bogusly placed at a mental institution, Illinois Department of Mental Health, for thirteen years. Now, Judge Grace from Carbondale stated in two thousand eight, in front of the, uh, Williamson County Court, I had been locked up six years longer than I was legally supposed to be. I never had a mental illness to begin with. I never have ever taken antipsychotic drugs. I asked for a jury trial in nineteen ninety-four, and it was refuse me. And it was refused by a Alexander County judge named Stephen Spomer, who was a Freemason, and also a Heron judge in the Williamson County Court by the name of Snyder Howe, who admitted he was a Freemason in the court, and he refused me a trial by jury. Now, Bob Drew was my attorney, who's, I've come to find out, was a Freemason. He bogusly had me see a David Warshar from Carbondale, who was a clinical psychologist, who was a Freemason, and I discussed as to why I shot the windows out of five public buildings in southern Illinois, because I had been threatened for after the election by high-level Freemason by the name of Dude Stilly. And I complained to the Marion Police Department, and I complained to the Williamson County Sheriff's Department, Russell Oxford, and I complained to, uh, Charles Granati, uh, who was the Williamson County State's Attorney at that time. They did nothing about it. So, on the last minute, I ended up shooting the windows out of some public buildings here in Marion, in Heron, and, uh, the Shriners Club in, in, uh, White Ash, just to wake the community up to my plight. And I had passed out numerous pieces of information, like I've passed out tonight, to the city council the last several weeks, and to the people here. Anyway, Bob Drew told me in nineteen ninety-four, after they had sent me, just right before they had sent me to Chester Mental Health Center, he told me that never in all of United States history has a Mason ever been given the death penalty for murder. And I thought, "Well, that's discriminatory. That's why I'm against the death penalty." If Masons don't, you know, if Masons don't get the death penalty for murder, why does everybody else? Now, Bob Drew told me that, and he was the first judicial judge. He was made that one month after he bogusly sent me to Chester Mental Health Center. I had no mental illness, one, one, one way or the other. Now, what they did do to me is, instead of being an outsider looking in, I became an insider looking out, because I had worked for the Department of Corrections, and I can tell you, I was a night supervisor with a doctor and a med tech, and out of twenty-five-hundred inmates, when I was there three years, not one of them was a Jew, and not one of them was a Freemason. So, no, and I need to, Bob, don't stop me from talking this.
No, wait, wait. We, we've heard most of what you're saying.
No, these people haven't, and the people in the community haven't.
I know, Jim, but this is not the kind of a forum where you can come in and go off on the route you're taking.
Well, I'm, I'm...
Now, wait a minute, now, wait a minute.
Okay.
What, what do you, what is your purpose? Why are you addressing the council? That's what you're supposed to do.
Because, because of just the, some pressures that I've been under here recently, in the last several years, things that were just completely unnecessary.
Yeah, but what, what do you want the city council to do?
I just want the people of the community to know that I've never been mentally ill, I'm not mentally ill, I've never taken mental medication for thirteen years for any kind of mental illness.
Okay.
I want people to know that. Now, the governor, Bruce Ranner, I wanted to let people know, Bruce Ranner has recently introduced legislation to give the criminally insane here in the state of Illinois, uh, experimental drugs. Now, that's a communist ploy. Exper, and it's been passed by the House. Now, I think, now, this is what I believe, because since I've been passing out this information, I've had threats.
Well, that could very well be, but this is not the forum for you to, to...
I just, okay, that's fine, Bob, I'm just wanna make one more point.
Okay.
I'm just gonna let, I just wanna make one more point, one more point. If anybody, if, if you, if, if you hear where any kind of bogus, uh, trumped-up charges are up on me, like they wanna put me away or something like that, I would just wanna let you know, that's the kind of things they do. And they get mad, the Masonic Lodge gets mad when you pass out information that exposes them, and that's exactly what I'm doing, because it's treason to the United States. It's controlled by the European Rothschild and American Rockefeller families, and the Illuminati, and it's treason to the United States.
Okay, Jim.
Okay, you're welcome. And Mr. Green, that's fine, Mr. Green, and Mr. Green's a Freemason, by the way.
You're absolutely wrong.
That's right.